Welcome to our meeting. The date is November 12, 2024. The time is 7:00 PM. This is a city council study session. This is an open meeting of the Grand Island City Council. The City of Grand Island abides by the Open Meetings Act in conducting business. A copy of the Open Meetings Act is displayed in the back of this room as required by state law. At this time, please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The city clerk will now perform roll call.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Present.
Councilmember Kozinski.
Present.
Councilmember Hasi.
Present.
Councilmember Sheard.
Present.
Councilmember Pollock.
Present.
Councilmember Fitzki will be absent. Council President Stelk.
Present.
Councilmember Nickerson.
Present.
Councilmember Lanfair.
Present.
Councilmember Conley.
Present.
And Mayor Steele.
Present. Also present are Jill Grenier, the city clerk, Laura McAlune, the city administrator, Patrick Brown, the assistant city administrator, CFO, Carrie Fisk, the city attorney, Keith Kurtz, the public works director, and Matthew Gleason, the finance director. A sign up sheet was available in the lobby for individuals wishing to provide input on any of tonight's agenda items. If you did not sign up to speak on an agenda item, please come forward, state your name, and the agenda topic on which you will be speaking.
Jerry Poole's five B, C, and D. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Laban Jaguna, and I'll be speaking on 5B.
And if I may clarify, do you wish to speak or just answer questions? If there are any questions for you?
Both, sir.
Okay, that's fine. I just heard you talking out front. I wanted to make sure I understood. Thank you. Before we begin our agenda, we have three executives here from VenueWorks who will be managing the Heartland Event Center. And I want to introduce them. Kyler Tarwater, Tom Richter, and Scott Smith. Thank you for being here this evening. And would you kindly just give us an update and tell us a little bit about yourselves?
Good evening, Mayor. Thank you and city council members of the Grand Island community. We're excited to be here. Today's our Kyler's first day of employment. And to my left here, Scott Smith is our director, National Director of Operations for VenueWorks. And his first assignment, he started, he has worked for us for many years, but took a three-year absence or hiatus and is back today. And he'll be spending a lot of time in Grand Island, Grand Island getting the operation up and running. And Kyler's his first day. He moved here from Topeka. You can say a couple of words.
I'm Kyler Tarwater. Thanks for having me. I can't tell you, I'm really excited, mostly for the fact that Pat over here went to Kansas State also. So on Nebraska corn, as you're fans, I apologize. It made me feel right at home. I'm looking forward to working with everyone. I've had some time to look at the facility. It's a beautiful facility. There's really a lot we can do with it. And I look forward to working with y'all.
Thank you.
So we started today working with the current managers, Foner Park. And that's been a great transition. And things are going to go really smooth, I feel. And we're excited to get up and going. So thank you.
I appreciate you stopping by this evening. It's nice to see you and to meet you. And we look forward to working with you. The first item on our agenda for discussion is 5A, railside festoon lighting schedule. And Ms. DeJenners, I understand you signed up to speak. But I just want to clarify, you may just want to listen. So if you do desire to speak, you can just raise your hand or something, and I'll acknowledge you.
Thank you, Mayor. So this item is on our agenda at the request of Ms. DeJinnis. She and a number of her friends are walking along Third Street in the early morning hours and notice that the festoon lights are turned off. The current schedule for the festoon lights is 2:00 AM is when they turn off. So they're on approximately on an average of eight hours a day. Councilmembers Hasi and Pollock, and I think a number of you, received emails from the walkers. And so they requested a study session on this topic. We do have some additional information that should be at your desks on the data, the numbers. When I drafted this for the study session last week, I made a mistake, I had a mistake in my notes about the cost. So Ryan Schmitz has prepared some updated figures for you about what the actual cost is to run the lights. So really, this is just your opportunity at Councilmembers Hasi and Pollock's request to discuss the schedule for the festoon lights.
Yes. Just come forward and state your name.
And I would just like to mention that the lights, when we first started walking Third Street, the lights were on. So they used to be. I don't know exactly what time they turned off. I mean, it was more like daylight. I don't, I can't tell you probably the city could what, you know, the schedule was. But it was just here in, I would say, September or so that they started not being on when we were walking. So I know they used to be on like through the night more till like daylight or early morning. So I just wanted to point that out. And then, you know, it is, it's not real dark down there. There are still streetlights, but they are definitely very beneficial even for security. It's nice to walk down there and enjoy just the nice lights. But it's also nice to have that extra lighting for security. We do see some other walkers as well as, and also like some shop owners. Both the coffee, that daily dose opens at 7:00 AM. So we see people come in there in the dark. And the juice one around the corner, I can't remember the name of it. But, and even we've noticed, I assume there are people living, you know, upstairs in apartments and stuff and coming out in the street and getting in their vehicles and stuff. So there's, you know, more activity down there than what a person might think at 6:00 AM or, you know, 6:30, 7:00. And I just, you know, we also just enjoyed the look it gave the downtown street. And I, so I just really wanted to stress that. But, you know, it seemed to be a change in the lighting. So that's why I brought it up and.
Thank you.
Hope to have them consider it.
Thank you. Mr. Hasi.
Thank you, Mayor. So when I, when I first read, read the packet, it kind of reminded me of one of my childhood stories. I asked my mom, I said, Mom, would I get in trouble for something I didn't do? And she goes, of course not. And I said, well, good, because I didn't make the bed and I didn't do the dishes. But I also did not ask for this to be on the study session. But I will tell you the story. I got an email from Lori on the city's website. And I spent less than an hour. I had talked to the city staff about, just kind of just get an idea what the story is about the lights on and off. And Lori's right is that it used to go on till daylight. And now they shut it off at 2:00 AM. And she just wants it to go back to the daylight for safety reasons. Because this is, the festoon lights were a railside BID. I talked to staff and then I talked to Amos Anson with the railside BID. And I think he's like co-chair or something like that. And Amos agreed to put it on the November 20th agenda. So I think this is a great topic for railside because the interested parties are going to be the businesses that are downtown and maybe the people that live downtown. I don't know, as a councilperson, I'm not, I don't have an issue one way or the other, whether they're on or not. And if they need to be on for safety reasons, I'm, I'm for that. You know, for the safety reasons. But I emailed back Lori and I told her, I talked to Amos, here's his phone number. Here's the meeting date. It's the 20th. It's at 8:00 AM. Here's, it's in the head, basement of the Hetty Building. So I kind of set it all up to be handled by the railside BID. And so then I get the packet and, you know, for whatever reason, we're now having the conversation here. Amos, I talked to him tonight. I think Lori's been in contact with Amos or at least one of his staff about being there for that meeting. Again, I'll, happy to listen to whatever the council says, but I'm fine with whatever the railside BID chooses to do. It's not a financial issue. It's, it is a safety issue. And so I'm good with whatever the BID does.
Mr. Nickerson.
I am the evil monster that asked these to be shut off at 2:00 o'clock, just so people know. But that was more than a year ago. Well, in fact, it was probably within six months or less after we had them installed. And the angle that I'm coming from is the fact that my entire career in manufacturing has been one of cost reduction. And so that's what's in my mind. And I'm trying to understand, why would we want to have lights on at railside when from about 1:30 on, there's probably nothing that really happens down there? Most people are sleeping. Yes, there's a little activity. But for the most part, there's really no one there to enjoy them. Why would we want to keep them on another four hours or five hours? That's really not necessary. It's not the cost of operation, although we never want to say that the details aren't important because they are important. But for me, it's the life of the bulbs. Now, I didn't know what these bulb lives were. I, as I've read through LED lights for festoon lightings, I've seen anywhere from 20,000 to 50,000 hours is what they say they should last. Memo I've got here from city group says that these are at 25,000. That's right at three years, just a little under three years of useful life under normal circumstances. By leaving them on another four hours a day, we take away about two months of their life every year. That's where I'm coming from. The initial cost of the lights themselves are around $114,000. I just didn't know why would we would want to, every year, by running them longer than we need to, to take two more months every year away from the life of the bulbs that will force us to replace them again. Not in an expensive rate. I think it's less than seven bucks a bulb. But once they start going out, we have to deal with that. In me, it's why don't we stretch it as long as we can before it becomes an expense? To me, Third Street has never been a safety issue. They were never presented to us as, for safety reasons. They were to help create an ambiance and a character for Grand Island railside, which I think we have. And I think it's beautiful. I think they're a wonderful addition. There's not one complaint I've heard from anyone that looks at those lights and just doesn't stand in awe and just say, man, this is some good stuff. So my point of view, and thank you, I'm assuming you're the one that sent me the email because I don't remember, but it was a very civil email. Thank you. There's sometimes we don't get good emails from people. And yours was very basic saying, I know that you're the one behind it. Would you please consider turning them back on? I just want you to know where I was coming from, from that. But the downside is that they've been on all this time up until maybe you're saying September. I assume they've been shutting off at 2:00 o'clock for quite some time. I don't know if we haven't had the capability or if we just chose not to. But to Chuck's point, you know, if, if we want to burn them another four hours a night or five hours a night and start eating up the life of them two months a year, I guess so be it. But that's where I'm coming from. It was from simply cost reduction and control. That's my whole life. That's what I think of on everything that I look at. And that was one of my questions. So thank you for bringing it to our attention, though.
Mr. Pollock.
Thank you, Mayor. And I am the one that asked for it to be on the study session. So you can, you can all blame me. But I wanted it so that everybody knew exactly what was going on. It seems like sometimes we don't know what, what we're talking about. I can tell you that at night downtown, I worked 30 years on Snow Hall at night. And there's some real clients walking around downtown at night. And I can understand somebody wanting to have a, a little light to see what's going on. So, you know, whatever the council decides, or I should say the bid, because Business Improvement District, I think what's the 20th, they're going to have a meeting. And they'll probably decide then what they're going to do. Whatever they decide, that's fine with me. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Pollock. Mr. Lanfair.
I got a phone call this afternoon about this. My reaction was, what the heck is this about? I hadn't really heard anything. The woman gets off late downtown, very late. She closes up a restaurant. And it kind of relates to my wife, a nurse, who got off the night shift and went into a dark parking lot. The more light you have, the safer you feel. And so I would support leaving them on all night. They are a safety factor. If nothing more, it gives you a feeling of security having the lights. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Lanfair. Ms. Kozinski.
Thank you, Mayor. Carrie, can I compel a city employee to come up if I have a question regarding? Ryan? So I thought that these were on a photocell and were set dusk to dawn. But now, after reading this, it says you guys can set them at any time. So are they on a timer?
So when we initially put them in, they had what they're called an RCOC. It controls a block at a time. So we didn't have that capability when they first went live. So the night of the great reveal, we actually had six guys at six different boxes simultaneously flipping switches. After that fact, we got a cellular connection and interconnected them. So they're all controlled now. And so at the time that Mitch reached out, was right at the time that we got that control. And I think probably why it wasn't noticeable this summer is because the sunlight came up so much earlier. So the timer itself was set whenever that was at 2:00 AM. Prior to that, it was dusk till dawn. So.
So could it be set to shut off at 2:00 AM and then start back up between like 5:00 and 7:00 AM?
I think, I think you can even set it in one-minute increments down to that level.
So we could have a pretty decent compromise. I mean, I think it's nice to have them on all night, but I just wanted to make sure that it was feasible if we wanted to do like a split time. Would you have any concerns with the extra on offs on the LED bulbs versus letting them burn?
No, it's the, the switch in the cabinet, the contactors would be fine. That's as long as you're, you could do it multiple times a night if you wanted to. And it's, now it's all computerized. So we can make the switch in like five minutes.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Mr. Sheard.
Thank you. Well, that was a neat idea. That's good thinking. I guess my thought on this is I don't live downtown and I'm not downtown in railside at 3:00 AM, 4:00 AM. I just would want to make sure that we talk with, the BID talks with people who live down there. And if, if it's been a complaint or not been a complaint that lights are on at 3:00 AM outside their windows that they live in, I don't know if that's ever come to our attention or not. But otherwise, I'm, I'm right on. I, it's not that much more money. And if we can turn them back on at 5:00 AM, that's good to me. I, I'm just still thinking what a great idea that is. I'm sorry. Do we, have we heard from anybody else? Do we know, Laura?
This is the only citizen contact that I'm aware of that we have received. I don't think utilities received any. Yeah, so this is, this is the only citizen comment that we have received other than how fabulous they look.
Right, no, no like negatives about it being on their windows? Okay, cool.
Ms. Kozinski.
Just to add to Jack, I don't think that the BIDs received any like noise, or noise pollution, light pollution complaints from any of the residents. I wouldn't guarantee that, but not that I've been made aware of, so.
Any other comments before we move on to our next agenda item? Mr. Nickerson.
Yes, while Ryan's here, I guess the other question is, your, your point, I think, is well taken that through the summer, it's probably not as noticeable because the sun's coming up. And I'm going to guess that the walking group, it wasn't a big, it's this time of year that we tend to notice this because now we've got the old time change and all that stuff. So because of the capabilities we have with the system, we would not necessarily need to be planning to run them in the summer all night long because of that very reason. So it sounds like we have capabilities. We can fine tune it based on the light situation we have. We know now that they will be coming on roughly at 5:00 at night. And they'll be on till probably 6:00 or 6:30 in the morning this time of year. It's just going to be the long part of the night. So that's something that we can kind of tweak. I, I'd thought along Bethany's line there that is there a way we could kind of gap it to save the, just the life of the bulb? So, so to her point, if we shut it off at a certain time, but we're able to kick it back on three hours later, every one of those hours is an extended life of that bulb, in my mind. Looking at what affects the life of an LED bulb, you already touched on it, the on and off isn't the issue. But there was something about temperatures can affect the life of LEDs. And I don't know all the science about that, but that was the only thing. Otherwise, it sounds like we do have some opportunities here that we can satisfy all parties and still not run them 12 months out of the year all night long. We just have to fine tune that and find that right range, I'm assuming.
That seasonal programs, you know, whatever, whatever directive we get, we can set it relatively quickly, so.
Yeah, I just, I don't ever want us to get in the mindset that it doesn't matter how much the cost. It doesn't matter the extra electricity. It doesn't matter how soon we're replacing. Because I, to me, everything matters. It's just finding where's that best spot to satisfy all parties. Because 114,000 bucks is still 114,000 dollars. And every bulb that burns out is still going to be around seven bucks today. I don't know what it will be five years from now. But it's just things we have to be mindful of. And, and if we can satisfy some needs for walkers and yet we know that through the various seasons, we can adjust that, I think it's a win-win for everybody, probably. Thank you.
Moving on, agenda item 5B, Grand Island Economic Development Corporation, LB-840, loans. Mrs. Burley.
Thank you, Mayor. Mary Burley, representing the Grand Island Area Economic Development Corporation. Here to present tonight, two projects and updates on those two projects. But also, we're going to start with Zabuni Coffee. We are requesting a termination of Zabuni Coffees, Zabuni Specialty Coffee Auctions, LB-840 contract. This started in 2019. Zabuni Specialty Coffee was an entrepreneurial startup with the main goal, and it was successful for a period of time, to be the first and only distributor, wholesaler of Kenyan green bean roasted coffee here in Grand Island. And we were successful for a significant amount of time. This initiative was led by Cora and Laban Jaguna. Laban is with me here this evening to answer some questions. But this was no easy feat. This was the first and only time in North America that this had happened in our community. It started with two international trade delegations that we brought from Kenya to Grand Island. And then we sent one international trade delegation back to Kenya because we needed to merge and build the relationships on a federal level. This was a brand new initiative, a brand new commodity that was coming overseas to our community. This is an example of the international trade delegation that was sent over to Kenya led by former EDC President Dave Taylor and Senator Dan Quick. This federal trade delegation from Grand Island met with all levels of elected officials, community members, coffee farmers. This is one picture of our, our Grand Island Trade Delegation meeting with a then deputy president of Kenya, whom is now the president of Kenya. So this opportunity made national headlines and put Grand Island on the map for our innovative and progressive and entrepreneurial support ecosystem, something that we continue to build. We are never, we never cross the finish line in being that supportive hub for new business growth. Zabuni Specialty Coffee not only put us on the map from an entrepreneurial ecosystem, but they also were the catalyst to the rehabilitation of the former, we call it the old Sears building, if everybody remembers that. That building was for all intensive purposes, fairly visionless. It was vacant. The last occupant was Immigration Customs Services that had occupied about 8,000 square feet of that building, which is a massive building. After the renovation of this building, the rehabilitation of this condo, other condos started to be rehabilitated within, within the former Sears building. It's been renamed into the Belzer Business Center. And it houses Paramount Development, which is, has significant amount of residential units. It houses Central Community College Entrepreneurial Center. It houses boot shooters and other small businesses and residential units. The property taxes pre-Zabuni Specialty Coffee in 2018 brought in a property tax receipt of about $9,855. In 2023, after the rehabilitation of this building, it now brings in around roughly $44,000 annually in property taxes. This is another picture of that international trade delegation where that building was rehabilitated. Zabuni Specialty Coffee occupied 8,000 square feet on the first floor and 21,000 square feet in the basement. Zabuni Specialty Coffee did meet its benchmarks for two workforce audits, rather, one workforce audit in 2020. After a successful completion of those benchmarks that were made of the audit in 2019 and 2020, funds were distributed to a total of $48,333. It came after COVID, post-COVID. Stars never aligned again for COVID, rather, for Zabuni Specialty Coffee. And they did not meet the benchmarks of their contract in 2021 or 2022. Funds for those two workforce audits were never distributed to Zabuni Coffee. It is with a heavy heart that we ask that you terminate Zabuni Specialty Coffee's LB-840 contract and agreement. This was not a failed project by any means. In fact, it was incredibly successful. But in the way that the, that the application and the contract is written, the stars didn't align and Zabuni Coffee didn't, will not meet their continued benchmarks in their contract. Laban is here for any questions as well. Thank you.
Good evening again. My name is Laban Jaguna with Zabuni Coffee. So just to echo a little bit of what Mary Burley is saying is that we really tried our best. We, we really tried being creative, upskilling or trying to value add, especially after 2020. We realized that because of what the economy was doing and the way things are shut down, we had to pivot onto value addition and retail. Fortunately, we didn't go as far as we could because of the resources that would have been required to move into coffee shops and other entities like that. So as, on behalf of me, Cora Jaguna, and, you know, anybody else who's been involved with Zabuni Coffee, it would really, really help if you found it in your place to forgive the remainder of this loan. Thank you.
Jared Poole, would you like to speak?
Pardon me. Thank you for having me up here. When I read the packet, there was an issue about spending, transferring money from the, for education classes for GIX. And I, that's what I was meaning to talk about. I didn't see.
Okay, that one, I think, is going to come up next. So if you want me to call you back that back for that?
That's, that's part of it.
Yep, okay.
Mr. Nickerson.
Laban, I wanted to, to thank you for the work that you've done. I was able to go to your warehouse, your open house, whatever it was at the time that brought back some memories there. Thank you for, for taking a chance. Thank you for giving it 100% effort. And, you know, things happen as you're, we're here to discuss today. But I appreciate you helping change the landscape over there. And you were the, you were the one that initiated that change. And that's great. And I know this is probably a bittersweet moment for you, but thank you for what you've done. And I don't know what the future means for you right now. It's not. you right now. It's not Zabuni Coffee, probably, but I just wanted to thank you for what you've done in Grand Island. Appreciate it. And sorry for the challenges you faced, but I remember being there. I remember having your coffee, and it's some great stuff. So thank you.
Mr. Sheard.
Thank you. I'll echo that. Really liked your coffee. The cold brew in the can was really, really good. My question, Mary, when we say forgive this, what is the implications for the city?
I would defer to city staff in regards to that.
Actually, probably one of those questions that is a wonderful lawyer. It depends, and it's kind of complicated. I think whenever the action item comes back before council, I'll come prepared to brief council on the assorted options in front of it. But it was something I'd prefer to do in a close session.
I can give some general concepts in terms of the, Mary showed the amounts that had been dispersed. The way that loan contract was set up was that if he didn't complete the full term, that the amounts that had been previously dispersed had to be repaid.
Okay.
So that's what he's going to seek, is forgiveness of that repayment obligation under the contract terms. We actually did work with the EDC to change the terms of those LB-840 contracts, because the way they were set up originally provided for a distribution, a forgivable amount that was provided upon hitting certain metrics. Once they passed a year after that audit, if they continued to meet those metrics, that dollar amount was forgiven. So it, it, it actually was presented as a forgivable loan, but in order to reach forgiveness, you had to satisfy the metrics for forgiveness before the disbursement was ever made. Does that make sense? So we've, we've worked with the EDC to change those terms, because it is very confusing, I think, for a business person, even one, even someone who's not an entrepreneur and doing a startup business, to figure out that you've already met the metrics for forgiveness, but then there's an, there's a, based on the contract terms, there was the ability to come back, for the city to come back and say, no, pay it back. So it, it, it was a bit confusing.
Yeah, I guess I was under the assumption that we didn't give the money until you hit that year's benchmark. But you hit that year's benchmark, you get that money.
And then it's forgiven a year later.
A year later.
Because you hit the, those benchmark terms.
The next year's?
Yes.
So you have to hit it two years.
Yes.
To be safe from it.
Yes.
Okay. So what we would be asking legally would be for the 31,000 for the second year to come back.
And that's what Kerry would present at a regular meeting.
That's what we're asking to get forgiven tonight, is the question. Okay, that's good to know. All right. Thanks for being here and standing up in front of us. Appreciate it.
Jared, your speaker's light is still on. Mrs. Burley, would you please present on GIX?
Thank you. Thank you again. Mary Burley, representing the Grand Island Area Economic Development Corporation. Again, we are presenting an amendment to GIX Logistics 2023 LB-840 Application and Contract. Initially, when we presented and were approved this application in 2023, we wrote it for job creation and job growth. GIX Logistics with Jim Purney is here with me this evening, and the economy has drastically changed. GIX Logistics continues to be a leader in their industry and a leader in Grand Island. We are humbled that they continue to call Grand Island home, but we are asking this evening to be able to bend with the economy to meet GIX Logistics' needs and continue to support them in their, in their business operations. So if you see in your packet is, again, we initially had this application for job growth. We are requesting an amendment to enhance the job training because of the advancement and adoption of information technology and to keep their employment status stable.
Jim, did you want to speak or just answer questions?
Jim Purney, President, Grand Island, GIX Logistics. So with what Mary had to say, I would kind of add to that a little bit of the fact of not only the economy being sluggish, very sluggish right now, especially in the transportation world, we've had substantial AI growth, which makes it very hard to add people when the technology is out there to do the jobs of the human factor. I was just on a demo yesterday, yeah, yesterday, that where this computer technology is able to basically AI have a conversation with people and just the effectiveness of how much they've got these computers programmed to have pauses in between things and negotiate rates and to be able to say, let me go check with my manager when they're negotiating a rate, and then come back a few seconds later and say, oh, well, my manager says I can't do that. But what, what can you, it is insane, the level of technology that is out there, and it's only going to get more and more advanced. So we, with the economic growth and with this AI technology, we are like at a dead standstill of adding people. We do not see that coming forward in the next three to four years at least. So what we're proposing is using that towards the training dollars. We've met with Mary and come up with a program with very reputable people in our industry that can advance their knowledge and be able to use those tools to help us as an organization to advance further and staying competitive with some of the bigger leagues that are out there. So, thank you.
Jared Poles, would you like to speak?
Again, thanks for having me up here. My, my question is, and Jim, I don't mean to be a stick in the mud, but in looking over the courses, is this for 400 and some thousand dollars for classes? So I, being the radical that I am, I went to City College, or Community College, and asked what they had for, of the courses listed, they, we had Leadership Influence, Professional Development, ChatGPT, Professional Development Strategic Thinking. That may be involved in logistics, but the prices for these classes are unbelievable. So I went to the college and asked if they had XL1 classes, and they have a couple starting on Thursday for 160 dollars for a full day. So I thought maybe that'd be a consideration. The other thing I'm looking at is that the content of these classes, I mean, the leadership class is New Science of Leading Change, Vital Behaviors, Make Change Inevitable, Change the Way You Change Minds. What do these have to do with the logistics of moving products from point A to point B? I, and then, and it's the cost of, it's the cost that is associated with that. The other thing is that this is evidently leftover money then from the previous venture, right?
No, sir.
This isn't that, but it's, it's changing the concept of these, these funds when we talk about creating jobs and then these people will buy a home and they'll spend money and, and that the multiplier effect. If you just do an education, you don't have that. So you're spending a tremendous amount of money without getting a multiplier effect. Maybe somebody gets a raise here or there, but you're not, it, it just, to me, it doesn't make sense. So I'm, I'm looking for some input as to why, why, what, why what I'm seeing looks to me to be wrong and why nobody else is looking at it, or if they are. I, I think it needs to change the course of modifying contracts in the middle of the stream. It's for adding employees, keep it as adding employees, but look at the value you lose when you use it for educational purposes. Okay? Thank you very much.
Mr. Hossi.
Thank you, Mayor. So in listening, and I've read, read the documents that are in the packet, and in listening, you know, one of the things that I want the, the EDC money to be used for is to make businesses successful. And that's the whole point of why we try to nurture some success in the community. And I understand when COVID hits, and it had an effect on a lot of businesses, you know, and unfortunately, it's one of those is that we have, in the case of Zabuni Coffee, he just has to change his business model. Well, I think the same thing with GIX is because of technology and what's changing in the world, he has to change his plan. And I think we need to be flexible enough to be, to continue to be successful partners with them so that we can see these as they go through. And in order to talk about Gerald's comments, I think the next application might actually have those, you know, this is where the lessons learned. We've lost money on certain projects. We've made, you know, and we've had success in many, if not most of the projects that we've supported. But that doesn't mean we're never going to have a failure. But this failure, you know, if this, when we're looking out for public funds, is to make sure that they're, have a long-term success rate. And I think it requires us to be somewhat flexible with things that happen in the world to no one's control that no one foresaw back when it all started. No one foresaw what was going to happen with the AI. No one foresaw COVID happening. And so I, I think I would be supportive of both, both issues because I think I understand what goes on in the economy, and we just have to be flexible so that we can continue to be successful.
Mr. Still.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to shed some light on what's going on with Jim's business. This is a tough economy that we're in. Our business and many national companies have had to change their business plan. The, the way you do it, you can't afford with the minimum wage increasing, you can't afford labor anymore, you can't afford the fringe benefits, daycare. It's very expensive to stay competitive and stay in the business. People don't want to work for nothing. So that's, that's what Jim is doing. That's what I have done for the last two years. That's what many companies have done. In order to stay active and stay in business, you have to change your plans. Otherwise, you're going to fail. And A1 is a good tool on the market. I've, I've been in some Zoom meetings with that. It's very expensive, but man, you, you can have a computer take that call for you and talk to the person, and they, and you wouldn't know it was a computer you're talking to. That's how our business world is changing. And you think it's changed now, it's going to change multiple times in the future. Unfortunately, this just is the cost of doing business, and you have to go with the flow. And I think in this case, we need to work with him. He's changing his business plan, and I think what he's proposing will work for us and for him. But, you know, this is a sign of the times that we're in. Thank you.
Mr. Sheard.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of comments, I guess, or questions. Jim, I think you guys' business has been great for, for Grand Island. Longtime family making a big impact in Grand Island, and I appreciate that you choose to stay here. And I know that the original plan here was to hire, I guess my questions are, I'm a guy who loves education and, you know, I love professional development. I think it's very crucial. Can you tell us a little bit, I mean, maybe speak a little bit to what Jerry was talking about, because it's kind of scary to me that we're training them to replace themselves with AI? Do you see, I mean, you don't have to tell us all here about future layoffs or anything. I'm not asking that, but are we, are we amending this to not only not hire more, but is it at a long-term detriment to actually adding or keeping people? Do you have a fear of that?
I, I would not say that we're never going to add people. I think we're getting caught up with the times of AI technology right now. What we're doing is, with working with Mary and Laura a little bit, was we're looking at training dollars to get, increase these people's wages for the purpose of putting it back into the community, to buy bigger homes and invest more dollars into the community. The, I, I don't, we have to adapt with the AI. We're putting that on our own dime, but we're using these dollars to invest in the training to increase wages.
Is it as much a retention of the current employees? Do you see that?
No, I don't think it's necessarily retain, we, yeah, I take that back a little bit. We have had some where these AI companies, we've just recently lost a gal due to that because she's gone to the AI community where she's behind one of these ones that we're competing with. And so it is, yes, we're, we're doing it to retain to some level, but it's, I think it's more, our people are happy they're working, but I don't think it's going to be long until it is going to be an issue on pay.
And.
So the training will also, you know, they're going to be a higher quality person for us with all the training that they're going to receive.
Thank you. That, that's helpful. And you, you see them being able to be invested in through this to, that keeps them, it goes back to the original purpose of making sure we keep people.
Right.
And we grow.
Yes.
Okay. Mary, I got a question for you, I guess. Obviously, your board looks at this stuff pretty heavy before making a decision. Are, I'm assuming they're in approval of this. They're, they're good with this?
Correct. Yes. If you look at your packet, the amended LB-840 application includes the approval of the EDC Board of Trustees.
I'm good with that. All right. Thank you.
We have no other speakers. We will proceed with Agenda Item 5C, Camp Augustine Master Plan Discussion. Mrs. McAlum.
Thank you, Mayor. And just to follow up on that, we will see future action items on these two agenda items from the EDC. So you have in your packet all of the materials from John Royster's presentation to you of the Camp Augustine Master Plan, the cost estimates, both in big numbers and then broken down by, by factors. We wanted to give you the opportunity tonight to discuss that master plan. You really didn't have an opportunity to do so at the presentation, or at least maybe weren't ready to do so. There weren't any questions at that time. But we, as city administration and staff, want to know what your desires are in terms of, should we move forward with any elements of the plan? As John Royster explained during his presentation, this is a long-term vision with that plan and wouldn't be implemented immediately. But what we need to know from you is, should we start looking at certain aspects of it and seeking funding, grant funding or otherwise, to, to actually start to make those, those elements come to fruition? So we do have, Pat, could you put up the PowerPoint? We do have the PowerPoint. We do have the PowerPoint that that John presented loaded up here so you could have it on the viewer. And so the viewers at home can see it. But what you, really what, I think the very last page, the map of Camp Augustine and the improvements, might be a good place to start the discussion. So really, what we're looking for is feedback from you of, are there elements of this that you think are too much, that you think we should leave out? Are there elements that you think we should focus on immediately? There are some grant opportunities coming up starting January 1, so that was part of our thought process. And let's let's have you discuss this and tell us whether we should start seeking funding. And then in addition, we also have three of the committee members that served on the Steering Committee for the master planning process, Tanya Brown, Melissa Delay, and Sandra Berar Fuentes. We're on the master planning steering committee, and then also Dave Plon from Boy Scouts, who obviously has a longtime vested interest in the the development of that property with the Boy Scouts. So actually, I think there's one more slide, Pat, that gets the overview of the, should be the last slide. I think it's in there twice. Here we go. There, I think the next one down is a little closer visual. Back, there you go. So it's tiny, but you have it in your packets in front of you also. John walked you through all of the concepts, keeping certain buildings and reusing those, installing full-service RV hookups in a phased approach or all at the same time, improving the fishing lake to be a kayak and fishing pond with kayak rentals. The primitive camping, the tent camping along the lakeshore, there's really nothing that needs to be done there. That would all remain as the Boy Scouts did it. And then you've got the trail system coming off of our future South Locust Trail. And pedestrian bridges suggested to connect Camp Augustine to Mormon Island. So are there elements of that that anyone has thoughts about?
Before I call on council members, I'm going to invite Mr. Pools back up because he signed up to speak on this.
Okay.
Thanks again, Mr. Mayor, Council. I I know this is early, but I know that under Mayor Johnson, they were the talk, when they were talking about putting a big park out there, that it was a long-term project, there was never a timetable was set for it. So that is a very important consideration. It's like, take two years, three years to raise grant money, use it. And then I I just hate seeing it being a, charging it to the to the next generation through taxation and those types of things. But one, in looking over the plan, I'm not sure how much of a dark sky area that is out there, but this is tremendously overbuilt, as far as I'm concerned. If I'm going to go to a quiet place, I don't want to take the city with me. And that's, and in fact, they referenced that. There was a lot in this packet concerning mental health and that this was going to be a SAV for mental health, obesity, physical health, et cetera, in the town. But, okay, so to keep it simple, I you have, I would say there's, cut the, cut the pads, the RV pads, at least 75%. Put some trees in there because right now that there was only, I think, five acres of green space, five and a half, maybe acres of of green space that was actually labeled as such. And and the other thing I would want to have you consider is is combining those three lakes. And that would be really, I think, a good place to start. You've got three small lakes. You can make a bigger lake. You can do what they do at Ellie Ray. You can have power boats or something out there. But I used to sail small boats. You need a kind of a lake to to do that, a little 12-foot boat, just zip around. And so that's why I always thought that that was, you have three lakes there, make one big lake. You'd have something to do. I would I would suggest keeping, putting more trees into the mix. They talk about education centers and things. Are those really necessary? The scouts kind of got away, didn't need those for all the years they were out there. They talk about major events. They got 160 parking places for major events. And so what would you get, 1,000 people in that with that many cars? So you, but then they compare this to events in Knoxville that pulled in thousands, tens of thousands of people. And I forget where the other place was. It pulled in tens of thousands of people. And you're not going to do that with 160 space parking lots. So I really think this needs to be looked at a little bit better. And you'll set your timeline, whatever it is. There were just, there was one more thing. We were talking about Chatbox or Chatbot, Bot, whatever, artificial intelligence. And I, in wading through that packet, I got to thinking, there's an awful lot being talked about for mental health, this and mental health, that. It got to be pretty tedious. So I I took three pages. I copied three pages and chat, put them into a discovering if they were AI-developed or not. And I got, I just took page, my glasses on my head. On page, page 25 of the presentation, or page 85 of the packet, and I used a cheap website. I didn't pay for it. It shows, it says it's 95% AI-generated text. And I just took these pages at random. Page 75 of the packet shows the AI detector showed 82% AI-generated text. And I did one other page that was, showed up at 90, here it is, yeah, page 88 of the packet. It shows it as 94% AI-generated text. And it's, because when you read the, it goes into so much detail that nobody that's going to try to get a master plan built is going to worry about. They may mention the health issues here and there, but it's, there's pages of this on on the health that it'll bring to Grand Island. So I just, I would like you to really take a real close look at this plan because extending it out over the many years, not developing it so much as it is, put those three legs together, and watch out for AI-generated BS. Thank you all.
Ms. Kaczynski.
Thank you, Mayor. Jerry, I agree with you. It's kind of concerning that we paid a lot of money for someone to have a computer write their book report, but that's not, unfortunately, not what we're here to talk about. Laura, you mentioned grants available on the first of the year. Are those for specific items? You know, are they grants for kayaking or grants for bird watching? Should we explore those first?
So one large grant that's available is the CCCRF grant. Libby, our grant writer, grant manager, tells me that that grant could could be written for the trail system, but it could also be written for any other of the recreational facilities that are there. The way this plan was done, it was, enables the city to develop it in phases and chunks. So those are, that's one option. We know that there are, well, you just, I believe it was at the last meeting, might have been two meetings ago, approved an LB600 application. If those funds are available again next year, that would be a grant that we could apply for for the sewer. That's an element to the cost. It's about 3.6 million. So there are a number of them. If there is interest in us pursuing those grants, then what Libby would do is bring back a resolution specific to that grant. Because obviously, if we don't intend to implement a portion of or any of the master plan, that makes our grant application less attractive. So she would be looking for a formally expressed statement of intent and support from the city council to support a grant application, regardless of what it's for.
I think it would be wise, especially those broad-reaching ones for like the trail system, that would take out a big chunk. I changed pages to look at that. But I think something I don't know that I found, or maybe I missed it, was kind of a a cost-benefit analysis. Like what what would be our lowest cost and highest-impact attractions to focus on first? And I think that putting in infrastructure all at once, it it locks us in, but it only, it makes sense to do the entire electrical system at once or the entire trail system at once. So you aren't doing and undoing and redoing. But that means that we've got to be in agreeance with the plan. So I am all for Libby pursuing all grants available, and if she's able to get them, that's fantastic. And my selfish request is all the kayaking stuff first.
And there's different elements to the kayaking, right? So there is the kayaking on the fishing pond, but there's also the put-ins on the river, which we would, could be very low-cost to put those in and may not even require a grant. I mean, that really is on the Platte River, a sandy bank to put in and take out. Yeah, yeah. But obviously, building a pedestrian bridge across, the bridge is is much more expensive. Completing the full trail system is much more expensive. One of the things that's pointed out in the economic impact study, which you're right, there is no cost-benefit analysis of which which section. But one of those things pointed out in that study and to the Game and Parks employees who also served as consultants to the city on the master planning process, is that the things that are in high demand are the RV sites. And not just primitive RV sites, but full hookup RV sites. And this was designed so that those could be done in phases. You see, there's two loops, an east loop and a west loop. So you could do one at a time. Part of that, though, requires the sewer. So if there are elements, that's kind of what we're looking for, is what are elements of the plan that you would really like to see deployed sooner rather than later, if you agree with the plan? The other thing that I would suggest is that because of the num, the size of this project and the number of grant applications that we would probably be seeking, and then whether we were seeking any private donations, it would be, we don't normally have the city council approve a master plan, but it would be helpful for those applications and for any fundraising efforts to have the city council actually formally approve and adopt this master plan, similar to what you do with the comprehensive plan. But it's a plan. It's not binding. It's it's nothing that says you have to implement it in the future, but it does give us kind of the strength of showing the city council support if if that's what you want to do.
Mr. Hawsey.
Thank you, Mayor. So one of the things when I reviewed the master plan is is it looks a lot like the several of the state parks that I've been in in Nebraska. And I've probably been in 30 state parks in in Nebraska and maybe some of the same ones multiple times. You know, what I have seen is a lot of the same stuff from the outdoor education. The RV site is kind of a new addition, what I'm seeing in state parks all around. And and those have just been filled. I mean, I I think they're absolutely well-used, you know, but from the art, from the cabins to the archery, all this stuff you see in all kinds of state parks. So it it really looks like the makings of of what is very similar to Nebraska state parks around around the state. My, kind of my question, maybe it's to you, Laura, is that when this whole thing started, we we purchased one piece of land in Camp Augustine, and we're going to try to tie it into all these other tracks. And I I heard you say that we were consulting with Nebraska Game and Parks, but it was to try to work into their biannuals budget and and at some point lease, lease it back or whatever. Because this whole thing is outside of the city limits. So again, we're trying to be supportive. But you were looking at $45 million, and and I don't have anything really to add to the master plan. But I'm not sure what the council is doing. And maybe you just said, just just because moral support. Because if we're talking about adding grants, what's the city match? How much money is the city going to put in? And when does the state Game and Parks take over? How does all that transition look like, or how far out are we look? I thought maybe we were within a couple of years when we started and we're a year into this. So kind of, can you help where we're at today?
I think I think the transition will be within a couple of years. I know that Game and Parks highly desires to include the land that they control south of the channel with Camp Augustine and make a very, a very large state recreation area or state park. So they are moving quickly on their end. But, you know, to say how much of a match we'll have for any grant, we won't know that until we apply for grants. And I just want to inform the council right now, we're going to have to seek private money to get this done also. So and to answer your question, well, how much? Well, I don't know. We have to do it. And I'm glad to see supporters here tonight because this is going to require a private effort, too. And but that that level of, that granular detail, how long, how much, we just have to take it step by step. We can't break it down. But I will say, Game and Parks realizes that there is very little public access land in central Nebraska. And that is why they are so interested in this. Now, they've got to get their marching orders from the Nebraska Legislature, but I will tell you, Game and Parks is working hard on their end. And and they see this as something that can benefit central Nebraska and Nebraska for generations.
And and I'll add to that in terms of the reason for bringing up those grants. I don't want to have Libby spend her valuable time working on a grant application for a project that, when she brings it to city council, there's no support for even moving forward with that project. So since we didn't hear any feedback when Mr. Royster presented, that's what we're looking for, is do you support this in concept? Should should I deploy Libby to go out and start actively looking for grants? And then remembering, each of those grant applications comes back to the city council for approval before we file it. So but do you even want her to start looking for grants? And if so, is there any area that you want to focus on first?
I think the uniqueness of this project is is that it's outside the city limits, and the state doesn't want it to be part of the city limits. So we have special authority to run things out to the Cornhusker Army ammunition plant. We have special authorities in in a couple of different situations. I don't know what our special authority is to create a park.
Sure.
A Camp Augustine outside of Grand Island city limits and spending city dollars. I don't, I don't really know where that authority is.
Sure. Think Hartland Public Shooting Park is a good example. And actually, I believe when the city started the golf course, it was not within city limits. But yes, we own the property, so we can develop the property. Game and Parks has asked us to hold off on any consideration of annexing it because annexing would actually prevent them from leasing and operating a state park. If it's in city limits, they can't do that. So really, this is just part of our trying to be flexible and maintain that as an option. It's a, as the mayor expressed, it's a great option. They seem to be very motivated to do that. Obviously, Game and Parks, just as we city staff need to get funding and direction from the city council, Game and Parks has to get funding and direction from the state legislature. So they're not in a position to be able to commit or tell us this is how much they'll contribute. But they have been very, very strong supporters of the whole concept.
Okay, so we're six weeks into the FY25 budget. How much do we, how much money do we have budgeted for this process? Whether it's a grant match or just direct spending on out there? I mean, how much should we have authority?
We have a, you budgeted for grants.
Yes, so we have grant appropriation in case we do get grants. I will, I will say to you that the CCCFF grant that Libby would apply for if if to move forward is a one-to-one match. And it's up to $2 million, so it'd be $1 million from the state and $1 million from the city. But we did budget for grant opportunities.
And I want this to be successful, you know, for the community, long-term. Yeah, I just, I just saw a $2 million expenditure at one time and a handoff in a couple of years. And so I, you know, just kind of, I missed all of the the master plan and the 45 million and raising funds. I missed all that part of the initial discussion, so, thank you.
Mr. Stelt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too support this. I think it's a great opportunity for Grand Island. I think we need to look at it like we do our budgets, do some planning and priorities, and decide what to start with. I think in a large project like this, you need to start with your infrastructure, get your sewer and water in place and electric in place, and then kind of expand from there. But if you expand into the RV park, that's fine. Or you decide to expand in cabins, but let's get the feedback from the council on their priorities like we do on budget, and kind of go from there. But I think it's a very, very exciting thing, and I support it. But it's also a big project. It's kind of like building your house. You never stop. You keep adding on and everything, and so that's what we're going to be doing here. But I do caution us to be wise and careful when we spend our money, especially if we have Gammon Parks coming in with a boatload of money that they want to do to develop, like RV parks and educational centers and that. So I don't want to waste any money, and I don't want to duplicate anything, but at the same time, I just want to be prudent in how we spend it and where we go with it.
Thank you. Mr. Sheard.
Thank you. First thing I want to say is that this plan seems incredibly well-thought-out. The process involved a lot of folks in the community. I know, I remember from the presentation when they talked about the RV pads. Specifically, Jerry, you asked the question, looks like there's too many, but they designed them specifically, if I remember correctly, to be spread out so where you could drive through, yet still have plenty of space. Probably because some AI engine told them that that would be good for their mental health. Regardless, it was well-thought-out for that purpose, honestly, to do what you're asking it to do, or what you suggested. The RVs, as Chuck said, we hear that all the time. I know Brad has a letter to us. He talks about it with me all the time, that we need more RVs. So I think the plan, Laura, I guess to your question, do you want feedback? It's good. People who are involved, that's what I like to see, and I think the plan itself is good. I'll echo that. I do like the kayaking, and my wife would like the trails first and foremost. And you don't have to pave them, just add a bunch of hills and let her do some trail running. So yes, I would say my support is for applying for grants, and that I would be supportive of that. But my question, I guess, is when we look at the full-scale project, I know, Roger, you said we don't have a timeline, and I get that. But if, let's say we start on this, and whether it's infrastructure, or my wife's trail, or whatever it is, and we put money towards it, and halfway through, the state says, yes, we're in. Are we on the hook for $45 million, whether it be private or local money?
You know, all I can say to that is my hunch is that down in Lincoln, they're going to want to see that there is enthusiastic local buy-in for them to tell Gammon Parks, go ahead. And it's like Gammon Parks said to me a year ago. They said, look, every city in Nebraska would like us to do something in their community. Every state legislator sitting in Lincoln would like us to do something in their district. So the only way we're probably going to get traction is if we have big local buy-in with fundraising and enthusiasm. Because we have to give, we have to give Gammon Parks support to say, we want to manage this. Because they get feedback like this. They get feedback, well, you have a state wreck area in my district, and I don't think you're doing enough there. So they get push and pull from all corners of Nebraska. So we have to show that we're in, we're supportive. And I think the most we can expect from Gammon Parks is that they will manage it, they will run it, they will make it a success. I think. Now, we can ask for more. I'm not saying we don't ask for more. But remember, we're not really talking to Gammon Parks. We're talking to their bosses, the Nebraska Unicameral and the governor. And the governor's on record as saying to Gammon Parks, the governor says, I want to see return on investment. Well, I understand that business perspective to want to see a return on investment. But quite frankly, we manage parks in the city. They don't make a lot of money. You don't have parks, but that's the governor. I want to see a return on investment. Well, parks typically aren't an investment, although Gammon Parks makes revenue off of camping. They tell us that. So we have, we have political sensibilities to be sensitive about. And we're just going to have to work our way through that. And I can't, I don't have answers as to how that all sorts out. But we're going to have to show there's great local enthusiasm and great support for us to do this, and I think there will be.
Well, you certainly have some enthusiasm, and I like that. And I have enthusiasm for it, and I know that there are great people in our community that do. $45 million of enthusiasm, that's going to take a lot more rah-rah. But I appreciate you laying that out that way, because it is, I guess my point in asking that is, if we start this process, it's ours to finish, for the most part, in one way or the other.
I think we approach it that way.
Yeah.
I mean, I think that's the prudent thing to do. And the next question would be, what if we can't afford everything? We can afford some. We're starting to use Camp Augustine just as it is. You know, we've had two star viewing events out there. I want to see us use Camp Augustine this next summer, just as it is. So it doesn't have to wait until everything's built out before people can enjoy it.
Perfect. I guess that, just like you're reading my notes. And to my next question is, right now, we own it, and Chuck alluded to what we budgeted for this, but I assume Todd's team is managing it? So when you have those events, we're doing that?
Todd and the library, so the stargazing nights have been the library programs. And then Todd had a recreational program out there this summer.
And as far as maintaining it and keeping it up, we're doing that now so that we can do more of those things, and what you're saying, Roger, if we could keep doing more out there. But do we have the manpower to handle that in the interim?
We're waiting for a nod from you.
He's going to say no.
I can answer that.
Remember, it's rah-rah. We're rah-rah.
I don't want to pop any, burst any bubbles, but no, we are maintaining at a very minimal level right now. We have a volunteer out there that's out there. Our staff goes out there periodically and maintains the grounds, basically. There's mowing that's done and maintaining the buildings. It's just kind of at a very minimal level. And some of the programs that we've done, we've had some of our summer camps out there, some nature-type of camps, and we'd like to do more of that. It's a great, a great place to hold those type of activities. So we're kind of getting our feet wet out there a little bit. It's been at a very minimal level.
And you did approve either the last meeting or the meeting before? Or maybe it's coming up next week? But we do have a proposal to farm a portion of it, hay it, which will get a little bit next week. Yeah, it'll last, okay, we did approve it, that's what I thought. It will get a little bit of revenue coming in from the facility.
And then, I should have kept, you stayed up here, good. We mentioned the trail going out to, down South Locust. Is that still in progress? Are we pushing forward on that? And some of these grants we talk about, would we be robbing ourselves of those opportunities?
And Laura can probably speak to that as well, and she kind of already mentioned it. But we are already looking at grants for that. It's 30% design, it's, so it's, there's some design that's been done. And so, yeah, we are now looking for grants.
Excellent, excellent. What would the potential, if you got some grants, what would the timeline be on that?
Depends on the grant, you know. Some of those federal grants take a while. You know, for example, the West Connector Trail we're doing, that's a federal grant that we anticipate will be 2027 when construction's done with that. So it just takes time, and there will be some environmental issues. We'll have to wade through a little bit out there, too.
So it might be a while even for us to connect to this. We could be looking at three, four, five years, even just to get that connection going?
But we have to start somewhere.
Absolutely. Yep, very good. Well, thank you. I appreciate knowing that we're doing some things out there. And again, I appreciate the work that's been done on this by everybody involved. I still believe this is a great thing for Grand Island.
Mr. Pollak.
I wholeheartedly support this. It may be $45 million, and it may take 20 years to get it complete, but it'll be a jewel in central Nebraska. You try and get a camping spot out at Mormon Island now, you've got to call four or five weeks in advance to get a spot. This will take care of the overflow, but it'll just make more. I can't see this being a lose proposition for the campground. There might be other stuff that needs to be added later, but I, like Pat and I said, buy it. This is a good project.
Mr. Nickerson.
Need to go back to a couple of, starting with the very original question that started with Bethany. That's going to be one of the things, but I also need to tie it into two things here. To me, having a master plan like this based on input from, I don't know, was it a couple hundred people? Was it 20 people? Whatever it was, it was a lot of people, from what I understand, had some input into this. And I think this probably reflects what the designers were asked to do. The number of campgrounds, I don't have a camper, but I know a lot of people that do, and they live in those things through the summer. They love those things. So I see where it's not a, where it's not going to be a challenge to fill those. But my question comes to two things. First, it's an observation. When you have something of this magnitude, there has to be a logical step that you follow for development. What are those logical steps? What are the things that make sense you do first? We've alluded to some of those things. If we don't have those identified, what you can't do is try to piecemeal something backwards, which I think was, again, to Bethany's point. We have to have a solid plan, so what are the logical steps? Now, I don't think we're going to discuss those tonight, but we need to know those. What's the logical steps?
Well, I think if the council is for this master plan, we can go, we can then ask John Royster and others to set out the steps, and we'll get you that information. That's
There has to be a logical approach, and I think we all understand that.
There will be, and we can get you that, but we were proceeding just tonight with the question, are you for this, and then
Nope, and I don't disapprove of you. All of you know, back the night we voted on this, I was the first and only guy that had reservations about getting into this, of purchasing Camp Augustine. But I was convinced by some people that this was a good thing, and I'm on board. I'm on board with that. So we want to move forward with it, but we want to move forward in a positive, efficient, effective way. And whatever those steps are, we need to map that out. Once we know that, then we know where the funds needed to get the biggest bang for the buck to get started. So now I'm going to go back to Bethany's original question. What were the grants for that we were going to be able to apply for?
So we have not, we don't have any specific grants planned yet. There are ones like the CCCFF that Libby indicated the deadline, the letter of intent is due, I believe, January 1st.
Which means what? I don't know what CC, whatever it is, what's that mean?
It is the grant program your wife administers.
Is that right?
It is. So it's through Department of Economic Development, Community and Civic Center Financing. But it, it's one that can fund a number of elements of this. So what Libby needs to know is, should she start looking at that? Because in order to submit that letter of intent, there needs to be some initial steps. Like, as I suggested, we could have the city council take action to actually approve and adopt this master plan. And then she would have that finite step to be able to include in the grant application.
But these multiple grant opportunities, are they very specific?
So right now, she has the one in mind. What we have not done is set her loose to go searching for more, because we don't know what the council's desire is. Do you want us to go start seeking funding for different ones? And those come in at very different times of the year.
So here's my question to that. By doing so, are we getting the cart before the horse? Because we don't know the logical approach that we want to attack first. So do we get a grant for something that ends up in the middle of this layout, when we don't even have the infrastructure in place to get to it? So I don't know what that grant is.
Well, I think if you recall John Royster's presentation, the way this is laid out is you can do it in elements. You could do the trails. You could do the electrical system. You could do, the water system doesn't need upgraded, but the wastewater absolutely does. That might be step one. We just need to know if you support the concepts of the master plan and want us to start looking and doing additional work to find out what would be a good first grant. And then, once we know that, what are the good grant programs to apply for, where we'd have a good chance?
I think we can make better decisions if we have a logical approach to development. That, in my mind, we're trying to, we're doing, getting the cart before the horse here without knowing that. But somewhere along the way, hopefully, we can get those answers to the mayor's point. Maybe we can get a logical approach, and then see how those grants fit in there to where things mesh nicely. I don't, it's just I'm thinking out loud. That's the things that I think's important. We need to know what the logical steps are, and then find out how those grants fit into those logical steps. My other question is, we talked about an educational facility. Who's going to own that?
Well, right now, we own, we anticipate always owning Camp Augustine. Our anticipation is Gammon Parks would lease the ground, probably at a nominal rate, and manage it. But we've always believed the city would own its land and the buildings on it.
Well, when I say own it, I don't mean actually own the building. I mean, own the responsibility of it.
That's where we'd like to work with Gammon Parks to manage it. Because quite frankly, if Gammon Parks would not manage it, it would have to become a city obligation to run an education center, which I would assume Mr. McCoy will be back asking for more employees. So, you know, the goal is to get it in the hands of Gammon Parks, because Gammon Parks, they exist to educate the public about the natural environment. And so that's why they're so excited about this, is because they have so few acres, particularly in central Nebraska, that they can do that. And, you know, some of the folks here, the supporters here tonight, we took a trip to some state parks. And I remember Ponca State Park, and they talked about all the school kids they bring in. That's a big thing they do, to expose them to the natural world, because otherwise, they would have no exposure. And so, you know, the education center, in my view, is dependent upon Gammon Parks operating it. But if Gammon Parks doesn't, we'd have to ask the question, do we want to build one? And do we want to manage it?
Okay. Well, to me, I'm still looking for a logical approach of development, which
I don't think it's going to, I don't think it's going to take long to get the order of things. We just needed tonight to know, did you want us to proceed? So, but I don't think it's going to take us long to set forth an order of, an order of things to accomplish in the most efficient manner.
And the other point I would make is that we've talked about, I've heard it at least referenced often on, do we want to do it all at one time? And I would say, I'm not ready to go into debt on something like this yet, especially with a lot of the changes that we see in our federal government right now, not knowing what else is going to happen down the road. But piecemealing it in a logical manner makes sense, but trying to fund $45 million to knock it all out, today, at this point, But trying to fund $45 million to knock it all out, today, at this point in time, I would be dead set against that.
And we're not suggesting that. But, Mr. Conley?
That grant you were talking about is, would that include some of that infrastructure or the RV spots either on the west loop or the east loop? Would that cover some of that?
The CCCFF could be something that could be used to fund the RV site improvements.
Because obviously, city's invested in this Camp Augustine. So I think, my idea, I like the plan, I think we need to look at maybe starting with that infrastructure, getting it where either we work on the west loop, east loop, getting where people can go out there and use the place. I think that's the first step. Because I would hate to see that place sat there for two years, and then nobody can go use it. Because like, as of right now, when could I expect, say, if I wanted to take a tent out there in my kayak, could I do that this next summer and use it? No?
At this point, from a management...
I'm just saying, but that's the question. Like, I like to see people, let's look at that, where we can actually start using this place, you know, get the community involvement, and going, and moving forward. Because we've done the investment. But, sorry, Todd, kind of cut you off there. But...
The camp is not open today. It's basically, you know, for just select programs at this point.
That's what I like to see, is just getting the community involved, getting people out there and using the property that we invested in.
Mr. Lanfair.
I think this idea is, this plan, it would be great for Grand Island. It fits quite well with the idea of us being a destination city. I'm kind of taken aback by the price tag. If there were a way to, you know, shuffle some of the cost off through grants, maybe even the state, they would chip in. And I really don't want to go $45 million in debt to do this all at one time. Basically, from what I've heard, infrastructure is the place to begin. But I support it, and no matter where it goes, let's just be conscious.
Just one last thing. I think we, what I've heard tonight is that we support the master plan, that we will, as you said, it's not going to take long to get an actual plan. I think another thing from the master plan that's going to be important is that if we need to go to, I bring this to the council to approve it, I think I would, I would, I would think we all want to do that. Because I imagine that's also going to help not only the state say, oh, yeah, they do it. Fundraisers are going to understand that that's helpful. I would hope that maybe, I can't legally say someone's name in the audience, but I would hope that the Boy Scouts would approve of the usage, and I think that might help as well. I think they were involved with the planning of this master plan a little bit. So I, someone's waving their hand.
You can come, yes, you can. Just come to the podium and state your name, and you are welcome to speak.
Dave Plon, with the Boy Scouts, former scout executive of the Overland Trails, now with the Mid-America Council in Omaha. You know, you're talking about, this project's near and dear to some of our hearts. I go back to when the discussion first happened with a group of about 25 business leaders here in Grand Island at the Community Foundation, saying, we have to make this happen. We have to even raise the money. So the $45 million is a lot, yeah? But I think we have the resources to raise the private dollars to help offset some of the cost. And I agree with, you need a plan, you need an action. But we need to turn these people loose to let them raise the money. And I'm talking Melissa Delate. And I'd like to ask her to come up.
Good evening. Rules require that you state your name.
My name's Melissa Delate. I'm the CEO at Greater Grand Island Community Foundation. Echoing Dave, I mean, the community asked for this. It's, the community is so excited about this project. And we're not only hearing excitement at a community level in the greater Grand Island area, but we're hearing excitement at a statewide level as well. And so there's statewide funders who are interested in this project. Dave's aware of some friends up in the legislature that are really excited about this project. And I think there's a lot of opportunity that we haven't tapped into on this project. But it's important to have a plan. And that's what I've been telling the mayor, and I've been telling Laura from the very beginning. You cannot go out into a community and fundraise for something willy-nilly. Can't go out there and say, I've got this concept in my brain of what this might look like, and expect somebody to give you some dollars. You've got to have something to say, here's what we're pitching. Here's what we're putting out in front of you. And it may not look exactly like this at the end of it, but it gives them an idea, it gives them a concept. And so, yes, $45 million was sticker shock for all of us. I mean, I don't think any of us expected to see that huge, huge of a number. But I don't think that it has to be a burden on the council alone. I don't think that that has to be a burden on the city of Grand Island alone. I think there's opportunity on a statewide basis, and there's definitely opportunity for some private funding to come alongside this. But they need to know what you want to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa and Dave. Appreciate you guys shedding light, because that does help understand the importance of just having this plan. And it's a good plan. So, thank you.
So I believe I'm hearing consensus to bring a resolution to formally adopt the master plan. And then we will get to work with Mr. Royster in terms of his suggestions on prioritization of projects. Okay. Thank you.
Up next, Agenda Item 5D, Grand, oops, wrong, I have the old agenda, I'm sorry. Agenda Item 5D, Federal and State Conflict of Interest Requirements. Mrs. Fiss, good evening.
Hello, Mayor. Been asked to present to you on an agenda item that was put on last council's agenda and moved ideally to the next council agenda. And that's the request that the city of Grand Island adopt a formal written conflict of interest policy. We've had a conglomeration of policies held by various departments or in our employee handbook for a long time. But courtesy to some changes imposed by the federal government, we are now required, as a condition for a vast majority of our federal funds, grants, and loan programs, to provide a citywide and entity-wide written conflict of interest policy with every grant application, every federal funding application, and continuously throughout an award process or the spending of those federal funds. So we've drafted for you a written conflict of interest policy that incorporates both the current requirements of the federal regulations and the accountability and disclosure provisions that you're already used to on a state and local level. For the most part, the federal requirements are duplicative of the requirements the state already has in place for officials and highly compensated employees. Some of the key provisions that are a bit different in the federal requirements, right now, under the State Accountability and Disclosure Act, those conflicts, the conflict of interest provisions are only applicable to certain classes of officials and employees. Federal requirements require a conflict of interest policy that is applicable to all employees, officials, agents, contractors, subawardees, basically anybody who touches federal money on behalf of the city as a recipient or applicant for those federal funds. So it increases the number of people who are subject to these conflict of interest policies in general. Federal regulations also require us to ensure that every subrecipient has a similar conflict of interest policy and actively enforces it. And we now, for any grant or federal funds issued after October 1st of this year, we acquire some monitoring and compliance auditing requirements that have not previously been particularly clear. One of the other big changes to the federal requirements that implicates you differently than other officials is that previously, most of these subawardee conflict of interest policies were applicable to employees, agents, or officials, but not necessarily board or council members. The feds have now required that it be applicable, in the master federal regulation, they use board members, but board members also applies to the city council as the governing body and governing board of the city, and all of our assorted subrecipients. The other addition that it requires is that we disclose organizational conflicts, so conflicts the city as an entity might have, maybe individually we don't have, but the city has. So for example, if we are dependent on another entity already, that would change some of those conflict provisions. The example that came to mind is, we have mutual aid agreements with a lot of other law enforcement agencies that we're very dependent on to perform our statutory functions. If we were, for example, going to solicit a contract to have Paul County Sheriff's Office provide backup law enforcement, that would be an organizational conflict the city would have, that would have to be disclosed if federal funds were involved. So there's some kind of really nuanced new requirements for the city's conflicts. In addition, we have to provide written disclosure of all of these conflicts with every grant application and at a renewal period. So the forms you all are used to filling out as elected officials disclosing your conflicts, now for a lot of the federal grant applications and throughout the award process, we have to provide that written notice of the type of conflict, the nature of the conflict, the value, and our mitigation plan. So, for example, if I owned a business, you would have to include in your plan how you were going to shield me from participating in the distribution of those federal funds. Because for most of the entities, when the Office of Budget Management kicked out these requirements, they've given all of the assorted federal departments a period of time to implement their own specific rules. None of them have fully implemented the rules. All of them have rules in comment phase right now, so we kind of have a preview of coming attractions. A lot of them now, at the award stage, they'll take a look at and have a process to evaluate our conflict of interest policy and see if it's good enough for them. Then they kind of have two paths. They can either say, not good enough, we're rejecting your application, or we're going to condition your award. We're going to say, fine, we'll give you this money only if you take this particular step to shield these conflicts or to change your policy. A few of them, some of the bigger funders, Department of Energy, for example, also have additional proposed rules that would allow them to armchair quarterback all of our decisions later on, too. So, for example, one of the federal regulation requirements is that we have to have a plan in our policy for how we would discipline somebody for a violation of our conflict of interest policy. And unique to this requirement, that includes you as elected officials. Which, of course, you all know, the city's ability to discipline you as an elected official is not, you know, it's very, very limited by statute. There's very tiny reasons for which you can be removed from office or disciplined. So you'll notice in the proposed conflict of interest policy, it's got as much teeth as we can statutorily give it, which is a firm scolding. Because in the end, you can't vote to remove one another from office absent, you know, one of you moving out of the city, for example, or some very particular requirements. So we've built in a discipline process for you that, I mean, a public flogging of sorts, I suppose. But it is a requirement that we have that there. Department of Energy, for example, once you accept their award, as you continue to disclose conflicts, if you disclose a conflict, say, one of you fails to disclose you own a solar farm, you know, a solar panel manufacturing company, and they have the ability and the authority to come back in and say, you know, that discipline you imposed on that employee, not good enough. We want you to either impose the discipline we've picked or give us back all of our money. So we have, I mean, it varies. They, because in the end, federal regulations don't necessarily apply in a mandatory sense to the city, but they control the money. And so they, I mean, can they make us do this? As a condition of accepting federal money, yes, they can. Can they just come in and force us to do it? No. But if that gives you a sense a bit as to why the provisions are there, why we're asking for a written policy, why it includes some of the enforcement methods that it includes, kind of a peek behind the curtain as to the reason each of the things are there. The actual changes to the federal regulations are 436 pages. If anybody needs a sleep aid, I'm glad they print you a copy. Otherwise, if you've got questions, you can pop QuizMe, best I can give you. Or you can send me off with some homework for specific research questions you'd like me to get you an answer to.
So the bottom line is, these federal agencies are saying, if you want our money, you have to have a conflict of interest policy that meets our requirements.
Yes. Yeah, and it's likely that some of them may come in with more teeth. There's at least a couple that are also proposing requirements that every employee be trained once every two years on the conflict of interest policy and every subaward recipient. So it's possible this will have more hoops to jump through, depending on the agency or the particular grant or loan. So this may be the first of many hoops, but, you know, for millions and millions of dollars, it's the cost of doing business.
Thank you.
Gerald Poles, did you want to speak on this?
Thank you again. I just, over the years, Grand Island Area Economic Development Corporation has had, there's people on the board now that have received taxpayer-funded grant money. And there's always the consideration that are they pushing that into their own, not pocket, but in their own direction? And I, and I won't mention names, but we've got a large manufacturing place out about three miles west of town, we're extending a sewer line to them. And they're on the board directing projects or recommending projects. And we have an individual that is responsible for a very large housing project in town, and he's on the board now. And then we have, you've seen the construction trailers around town of one of our large industries. And I'm not sure if he is still on the board or was before, but he was, I believe, CEO of that company, or still is. And I, so I'm hoping that whether there was anything, you know, cronyism going on, I don't know, I don't care. But if this conflict of interest issue does away with those, so that all these contracts can pass the smell test, you know? And so I'm hoping that this project, this conflict of interest detail is, eliminates all of that stuff from happening again. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Nickerson.
Terry, I'm going to just ask you the most basic question here, because most of what you said was Greek to me. So I'm going to just boil it down to, how does it affect me? How does it affect me in my life?
You already have all of the same requirements on you, courtesy of the Political Accountability and Disclosure Act. So it really changes administratively what we report and who we report to. For you individually as council members, the only addition is that if you were to violate the laws you already are subject to, your fellow council members could impose discipline to include private scoldings, public scoldings, requests, and such.
What kind of violation would, could we do that would prompt that type of repercussion? I mean, what would I, what could any of us do? I look at some retirees, you know?
I mean, very generally, most of these conflict of interest policies, acts, regulations, are designed to stop self-dealing, from you voting to award yourself a contract, from you doing something that, you know, or an employee using their government position for personal financial gain, you know, different than, you know, everybody's better off if roads are nice or parks are better. But if I were to use my position and the knowledge I have to get a competitive advantage, make myself money, insider trading, those sorts of things. So really, you know, keeping that duty to the public that you all have as elected officials above your own interests, or if those interests are in conflict, knowing when to step away. But you guys already have to do that all the time, or already subject to that under the Political Accountability and Disclosure Act. the Political Accountability and Disclosure Act, so shouldn't be much new to you.
Right. So there are two of us that are involved in housing that I know of, real estate-type things. If we had something before the council where we, the development was going to receive federal dollars, but as realtors, we may be able to sell one of those properties, or are we in a conflict of interest at that point?
So this, most of these regulations, like the state act, require the disclosure of potential conflict of interests, and then separate disclosure of actual conflicts of interest. My advice is always to err on the side of over-disclosure. On the federal grant level, with these particular programs, that now becomes part of our application, the conflict of interest policy and notice of all the potential conflicts. So that that way, the granters can decide, is our proposed mitigation plan enough? So, you know, if our mitigation plan is that you wouldn't vote on something, we would recuse you from voting on something you have an interest in, or we would shield a particular employee from participation, that would now be something else they would evaluate in awarding that grant, is have we taken enough steps to ensure there's no self-dealing? Ideally speaking, we already govern ourselves that way, and this would have no real changes. But is it possible that one of those federal agencies would decide that they want this shielding method versus the one we've proposed? Sure. But if you really were violating, this would be violating a bunch of other laws, too, so please don't.
Yep, okay. All right, very good, thank you.
Mr. Hawsey.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I'm probably the one that asked to put this one on, so this one I did ask. Part of the reason is that I know, and I think you discussed part of it, because one of the comments made earlier was earlier than today, was that we've been out of compliance for years. It sounds like we've only been out of compliance for fiscal, this fiscal year. But I noticed that we did have these conflict of interests in our employee handbook, professional ethics in both public safety, legal, finance, engineering. We have components in union contracts, personnel rules, we've got two sections in the city code. So if we adopt this, are all of those going to be repealed in lieu of this? Or what happens to all those other documents that we've already approved historically?
To the extent they are more restrictive than this conflict of interest policy, they stay in place. To the extent they're less restrictive, this is as minimally restrictive as we can, we can be. So if my, you know, if maybe my department's conflict of interest policy said, "You don't really have to disclose these things, we don't care," that would be gone. But if mine required it in triplicate and on typewriter, that could stay, that'd be fine.
Okay, so I understand that part of it. So as an elected official, I have talked to Frank Daley a couple of times in the course of my career. I don't even know if Frank's still there with the Nebraska.
Retired a few years ago, yeah.
But I have talked to him, because I did have to file a conflict of interest statement with this city clerk when I worked for Charter Communications. And what I filed was that I don't have a conflict. And so I could vote on a claim, okay, we're paying for internet for, just so that I had on file, that I actually don't have a conflict. So that was one of those, I'm trying to avoid somebody else saying, "Chuck, you've got a conflict," because you work for them. Well, they've got places in 35 states, and, you know, my job wasn't tied to what happened in Grand Island. But into the Nebraska Accountability and Disclosure stuff, it's all self-reporting. Chuck has to self-report through all these forms.
Well, no, a citizen can report if they believe you have a conflict.
Yeah, I mean, other people can go after me, but I'm just saying, the process for us is, if we have a conflict, we have the obligation to self-report and file with the clerk. So our conflict laws, we're supposed to be aware of them, and I think most of us are or should be. And we intentionally go and when we think we have a conflict, and I think financial conflicts are pretty easy to determine, that's the easy part. When I read this multi-page document, well, first of all, I don't understand it, because there's a lot of things in there. And it starts off with self-reporting versus perceived, you know, and so that's a big change for a council person, because they can go after it as a perceived, but unless it's an actual conflict, we're really not in conflict. But just to give you an example, so we're not only talking about financial conflicts, now we're talking about, I can't even talk to somebody, let me read you something. A situation, this is the definition of a conflict of interest, a situation where a public official in ex parte communication with a vendor or vendor representative during the procurement process, other than communications specifically allowed by city code. Well, you know, this is a pretty small town, and for an elected official, we talk to a lot of people, whether they be in the chamber, you know, we talk to a lot of people around the community, whether it's, no matter where it is. I'm talking to lots of vendors, people that own a small business, like Mark, you know, I talk to vendors all the time. I don't know if I have a conflict because I talked to Mark about something. And so when it says, "Ex parte communication," which I don't know what it is, a couple paragraphs down, it does define it. You know, it means a direct or indirect communication between a member of the public body or an employee and the party, party's representative, party's counsel, or person interested in the outcome of the quasi-judicial proceeding or procurement matter, that outside of the proceeding procurement and concerns of the substance or merits of the preceding procurement. I'll tell you what, I just, I can read it, I understand the words, but I didn't understand the concept.
So, and it's largely mirrored out of those federal regulations, which were written by lawyers for lawyers in compliance things, but what it functionally means is, when you have this conflict of interest policy and all these sort of regulations are designed to avoid the anti-competitive process, something that would give me an unfair advantage. So barring ex parte communications, which means outside of the process, outside of the presence of everybody entitled to know. So when we put something out for bid, there's a very clear process that the bidders know for how to ask questions and requirements on us to make sure everybody gets the answer to that same question, so that way, nobody gets a secret advantage over another bidder. This really just stops any official involved in that contract award process from having those, you know, side conversations to tip off somebody and give them the competitive advantage, so that about the substance or merits of the proceeding or procurement, so why there's an open bid for, you know, gravel, I can't go talk to somebody who owns a gravel company about the gravel bid we have put out and what we think we want to pay. So it's limited, I can still go talk to them all I want, just not about that active thing in front of somebody that would give them a competitive advantage there.
Well, I'm just, in general, I'm not in favor of policies that the average person can't understand, and it's the word salad part that bothers it. It's probably not what it says, it's just the, written by lawyers for lawyers.
We have to use Latin just to make us sound smarter than we really are, yeah, 100%,
But I think if it was clear, you know, for me, and maybe it just takes the conflict of interest 101 class.
And my guess is that may be why some of those agencies are proposing, requiring that training, is to make sure it's understandable for the person it really impacts, versus a policy to make compliance auditors at a federal agency happy.
I prefer you did it in French, because I took seven years of French and I didn't take Latin, so.
Aye.
Thanks.
Mr. Sheard.
Thank you. I really thought you were going somewhere else with the French thing there at the end. It's a family show, Chuck. I have a couple of questions, too. My first question, I think Chuck got two, but I want to, as you explained on this line C on ex parte, ex parte, am I saying that right?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think so. That's how I've been saying it my whole career, so nobody's corrected me yet.
Ex parte on. When we read that, I was curious, you said the gravel example, we can't talk to them...
About the gravel bid, why the gravel bid is pending.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
Were you saying you can't or we can't?
Anybody involved in that procurement process, anybody who has a say-so in it. So if you have a say-so in the award, you couldn't, but, you know, if Matthew doesn't, he...
Who does the research?
Who does the research on?
Let's get into a different example, because I don't know how I would be involved in that one, but Jerry brought up some prominent people in town doing, in my opinion, really good work in earning their bids, but I talk to those people all the time.
Yeah, so...
And I might ask them questions and advice on other issues. What is the statute of limitations on something like this? Like, how can I talk about something with them?
It's really about while that competitive purchasing is active. So, and the bidders and responders know this, I mean, we publish out in the bid calendar, we put out the requirements, we have the closing dates. So those timelines and that framework is out there and open, and we make it very, very clear to those people responding to the bid, so that way they know they don't accidentally mess it up for themselves either. So they all are also, already receive these advisements, and whether federal funds, state funds, city funds, there are a bunch of state statutes that apply, they all know that if they sidestep that competitive, public, transparent process, it could disqualify or debar them. So there, anybody who does business with the government usually knows how to avoid compromising their ability to get those bids.
Maybe statute of limitations wasn't the right thing. Again, wrong terminology, I'm trying to sound smarter than I am.
You got the lawyer thing down, just say lawyer words and hope it makes you not deal with it.
Yeah, no. Let's say I have a conversation with somebody, and I don't mean to come up with what ifs, but I just want to make sure I understand this. These folks that I have, I might be golfing with them, and we talk about different things, and I ask them questions because they're really good at what they do, and I want to be smarter. They're not up for something now, but if something comes up, because we've talked about, it could be in the future, when I filled out some of my 40 different disclosure forms that I've already filled out and filed with you and with the state, that I think cover most of this, it has a term in there, correct me if I'm wrong, now or in the future, or something like that, right? You referenced it earlier. But I don't know that one of those fellows is going to come up for a bid. Do I have to recuse myself because I've had a conversation before it was a part of this?
So really, it's when you know. I mean, when you know there's a conflict or a potential conflict, like if you know by virtue of your position that in January, we're going to open a bid for 25 semi-trucks, and so you just, right now, you go and you purposely talk to semi-truck companies, and as long as you're not doing something nefarious, you're probably going to be fine on everything.
Probably? That doesn't seem very legal.
My definition of nefarious may be different than somebody else's. When in doubt, especially for you as elected officials, one of the things I will suggest ad nauseam is, you can, if you're ever not sure if your particular scenario is or isn't a conflict, call the Accountability and Disclosure Commission, they will issue you an opinion, they will advise you individually as elected officials, they'll issue us opinions, they'll tell you, "Yes, we think it's a conflict," or "No, we don't." The advantage to doing that is, at least at the state level, if they tell you you're good to go and you rely on it, you have that immunity, for lack of better words there. So if you're ever not sure, get, ask them, 100%. They, I mean, they have staff attorneys who, that's their entire job, is to do those things, advise them. They will issue public opinions at your request, they'll issue you private, personal opinions, they'll, they answer their phones, I mean, they're wonderful about all of that. And they, I mean, they'll go through and do things in split hairs, and, you know, your scenario is fine, yours is not fine, yours is fine.
And I've reached out, and they have...
And I would totally lean on that.
And that, this doesn't go against that advice, right?
No, no.
Their ruling or their suggestion would not, it would trump this, is what I'm saying.
For state and local, for state and local money and state and local funds, is it still possible that a federal agency would come in and say, "Look, we get the state's okay with this, but we're not, we want you to do this extra thing." That's why I think that erring on the side of over-disclosing potential conflicts, then you've got that safe harbor that, you avoid that appearance, something could be wrong.
Next question, Article 9A, I do sound like a lawyer. If you would address your attention to page three, Article 9-A here, it says that "A public official who has recused himself or herself from serving on a public body in a particular proceeding shall not sit with the public body." Is that literal?
No, not, you can stay in your chair if you want, but you can't, as you're convening as council, when you come into the room and you are sitting as a member of city council, and so sitting in that capacity rather than in that particular chair.
But I don't have to get up and walk out?
No, I mean, though you will find city and county attorneys who do advise people, "Okay, to avoid it looking bad, get up and move, and then come back to your chair later." I think that's a lot of musical chairs, but there are people who do advise you to literally remove yourself so it's clear you're not a part of it. I'll leave that to your sound discretion.
This comes from a literal word that we have to...
Sitting, that sitting on a political body versus sitting in a chair.
I don't know if it's a Latin word or not, but it was confusing to me.
Yeah.
Yeah, French. To Mitch's point, I kind of wanted to know what this meant for me, because I, like I said, I literally have filed 40 of these, and I assumed when I read it the first time, this was the Jack Sheard rule, that, because she even called it that.
No.
Because I do have some...
Congress did not single you out individually for a regulation, though.
Well, sure felt like it.
I mean, the reality is, most government bodies are populated by active citizens, business owners, I mean, you guys are not living in bubbles, and not any city council, any governing body anywhere. So for state government, federal government, trying to encourage public servants without encouraging people who live in bubbles, or you have to abandon...
You're hitting on exactly what worries me about something like this, is, I am very active.
It's a needle to thread, yeah.
And I know a lot of us are. And having conversations with people involved, we aren't such a big city that we're not going to be involved with the same people who are involved with these things. So I appreciate you clarifying some of this. I still am a little worried that I'm going to step in it. I appreciate everything you've tried to clear up here.
And I think in the future, as you see requests to apply for federal funds, this will be a bigger part of that conversation, that application and the, you know, maybe soliciting, especially employees in different departments who maybe aren't normally doing conflict of interest things, sub-awardees, grantees.
Well, you guys...
I think that you may see more specific requests, this is the type of project, that way you'll have that opportunity to say, "Hey, I think you might need to disclose my conflict," or, "Hey, I also sit on this." You're talking about organizational conflicts, you know, "Hey, I sit on the board for this nonprofit who may be a sub-awarty, I might need to be out."
On some of this that you're talking about, we might not know that a grant or something or some funding is being applied for. Are you considering that and letting us know when it comes to it? Or do we have to, like I said, you know how many I have on file?
Well, most of these federal grants and loan programs require the city to make the application as an entity, so you...
Is there more work for me?
No, you already are doing, I don't know that I'm aware of any that you haven't already seen, both at the application stage and the acceptance stage.
And we internally look out for council members.
You'll help protect us.
I have no interest in having to fight with a federal agency about their efforts to clawback money because we made a mess. I would rather avoid proactive rather than reactive, always, always, yeah.
That's good. And I appreciate all your answers, trying to turn some of this into language that...
The English, yeah.
The rest of us might take a stab at understanding, and I'll sit next to Chuck in the 101 class and try not to use any French words. So, thank you.
Mr. Nickerson.
I just wanted to touch on something Jack said. He said he doesn't want to step in it, you know, he doesn't want to accidentally step in it, and we might accidentally step in it. Are there any considerations for people that just weren't aware, you know, we just didn't really realize that? And how do you address those? We accidentally stepped in it, but we didn't really know we stepped in it, so...
So for you guys as council members, for example, that's why, you know, we're, again, we're required to have disciplinary procedures, but we have some more minor and fractiony sort of steps. If you look at that, what for an employee would be a progressive discipline stage, it allows us to use little options for little mistakes and nuclear options for nuclear mistakes. Same thing with our employee discipline, you know, that's why you have those wonderful language in every employee policy that is disciplined up to and including termination. It's because for some minor thing that doesn't matter, I might be like, "Dude, just don't do that again." For something that jeopardizes a $5 million federal grant, I might fire, you know, might recommend firing an employee. This leaves all those options and that flexibility there for us to right-size the approach. You know, subject again, of course, to a conditional award by a federal entity saying, "You have to put more teeth in this..." to put more teeth in this area or that area. But ideally, it lets us respond proportionally to a violation should one occur.
Okay. Well, it's good to know.
Hopefully, not all mobsters secretly doing out government contracts like the movies, no.
I think most of us really aren't nearly as involved, as involved as Jack is in a lot of things. I've, I think I've had to do two conflicts of interest, maybe, maybe three in 22 years, but some of us are deeply involved in a lot of different things. But just curious, sometimes we may not even realize we're in a conflict, and then it's too late at that point, you've got to deal with it. So, I just wanted some clarification on that.
Mr. Hawsey?
Thanks, Mayor. So, I just had one more question about, we know that it includes the elected officials and employees. So, the definition of a public body means any board, council, commission, or committee of the municipality. How broad does that go? Does it go to the CRA? Does it go to Grogrand Island? Does it grow to these other committees or other things that...
As far as city boards, commissions, anybody who has authority, it's going to kick down to, so, for example, you know, the planning commission has authority to do certain things if they were implicated here. It also flows down if we do subawards. So, for example, community block grants, part of that requirement is that we make sure that the block grant recipients have a conflict of interest policy that complies with these federal requirements, that they have safeguards in place to disclose the conflicts, shield the conflicts, and then we have some monitoring obligations. So, I mean, these changes for, like block grants, for example, increase the amount of administrative work that has to be done for grant compliance once it's done. For us, it'll so wildly depend on the type of federal funding and whether we even use another body to distribute those funds or make decisions or policies. So, if a committee is just advisory, they may not be implicated. If they have authority, they may be just as conflicted as city council itself.
It's, it's pretty broad...
The favorite lawyer answer, it depends, it depends.
I mean, it is a pretty broadly-written document, and that's where it's, I think that's where part of the confusion comes from.
Yeah.
Who's included, who's not? Because it, it talks about family members too. And I know that all of our financial conflicts, well, like, I can't make my wife rich, you know? I mean, I, we understand those kind of simple things, but when it gets into communication that my wife can't talk to somebody either, it, it gets into even harder to understand compliance or not by an average person. That's where the challenge is.
Yeah, and, and one of the reasons we tried to leave it big and open is, for all these respective entities, if we change this policy halfway through a grant award, we've got to resubmit everything there. So, having a broader policy that is not as likely to need changes, or isn't so nuanced we accidentally hamstring ourselves, ideally will spare us from having to come back and redo this and redisclose to 20 different entities every time we make a change.
I suspect that if we have problems going forward, we'll come back here and redo it. Okay. Well, thank you, Kerry.
Notice, nobody took me up on my offer to print you all 416 pages, so...
I want to thank all of our presenters tonight for their excellent work. We have completed our agenda. We are adjourned.